Testing, one, two. There we go. I think. Is that loud enough back in the back? Okay, very good, thanks. Welcome to the City Council meeting tonight. We are at the Council's Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date's May twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three times five thirty P M. We'll call the meeting to order with this notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of the items that are on the agenda. You have to step to the mic, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes, so others may be given a similar opportunity. Speak clearly, direct your comments to the mayor and council, and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor, and the council will respond to those questions, comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able to join us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to reply to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. Let's start with recognition of employees. Chief.
Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. Put your timer away, because I need more than three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's my honor and privilege to be here tonight to recognize the two thousand twenty-two Marshawn Police Department Employee of the Year, and you're going to get to meet her in a minute. I want to thank The Times Republican for sponsoring this award that we've been doing now for several years. It's been a great thing, I think, for our department, for our staff, and for the community. So, we picked this time of year because last week was Police Week. Sometimes we meet on Police Week, so I'm able to talk a little bit about Police Week, and I'd just like to share a message about Police Week before I call Tricia up. May fifteenth through the twenty-first this year was National Police Week, and May fifteenth is always National Police Officer Memorial Day. Always. And it's a very special time for people that wear a law enforcement uniform. And it's something that I look forward to every year. It's a great time for us to reflect upon law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and given their lives in the protection of their communities across the United States. It's also a great time to thank our law enforcement officers who do such a great job for us in the community on a daily basis. And last week, the community came out and supported us like I haven't seen in a long time. And the community supports us well throughout the year, and we appreciate it. But Anna Vaughn, our administrative assistant, dubbed last week Police Department Get Fat Week, because so many people brought us food, and it was just unbelievable, and we really appreciate the great support we get from the community. I always like to remind everyone, though, that being a police officer can be, and very often, excuse me, is a dangerous profession. Over the last decade, on average, one hundred and seventy-six police officers have been killed in the line of duty, and over fifty thousand are assaulted annually. Last year, four hundred and seventy-two police officers died in the line of duty. Four hundred and seventy-two. Covid nineteen had a big part of that. But it's not the whole story. And I try to read, because every time a police officer in the United States dies, different websites push out information about those people. And I try to read all those stories. And I often say to myself, I wonder if they would do it again. Because who goes to work thinking this, I might not go home today? Who does that? Not very many people have those types of jobs, and I wonder if they would do it again. And I'm certain that they would say yes. This is a noble and honorable profession. And people don't do it to get rich, or to be famous, or to work great hours, because none of that happens. They do it because they want to help people, and I think they would do it again. So, four hundred and seventy-two in two thousand twenty-one died. So far this year, ninety-two police officers have died in the line of duty, and that's not including any Covid numbers. That's just ninety-two police officers for other reasons, other than Covid. I've said this before a couple of times now in this chambers, but I don't think there's been a more challenging time in my lifetime to be a police officer. I've been a police officer now for almost thirty years. There's a lot going on in this profession, and there's a lot of different challenges that we're facing. I think it's important to know, though, that the police departments across this country are filled with highly skilled professionals. It's amazing the changes that I've seen in the thirty years that I've been doing this job in terms of education and training, and the quality of the people that we're bringing into the workforce. And I want everybody to be cautious about what they read and see on social media. Don't believe it. Don't believe it. Our cops are top-notch. Our cops in the Marshawn Police Department are top-notch. And for me, there's nothing I would rather do. It's a noble profession filled with honorable people. It takes somebody pretty special to be successful in this profession, and I work with some really talented people every day, who are very successful in this community. We're very fortunate to have a group of police professionals that are dedicated to the job, compassionate about the community, and they come to work every day wanting to do the right thing. And I'm very proud of the work that they do. Under some very difficult circumstances at times. They come to work every day striving to be the best that they can and wanting to provide exceptional services. And I'm blessed to work with them. It's been the thrill of my lifetime to be your police chief. And so I want to thank everybody that I work with, not just the cops, but the nine-one-one operators, the people that work in civilian jobs, the sheriff's deputies, the list goes on and on, state and federal officers that we work with on a daily basis for the great things that they're doing in our community on a daily basis. Rock stars. And we're so blessed in this community to have people wearing this uniform every day. They all do an outstanding job. And I also want to say thanks again to the community. We have tremendous support here. And so when I'm out recruiting police officers now, one of the first things I talk about is how much the community supports us. Because it's not that way everywhere, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. I also understand that our relationship with the public is a very fragile thing, and we have to guard it and protect it and work on it every day. But we do appreciate the support that we receive. And we need it now more than ever. So, thank you for everything that you do for us. So, Lieutenant Tricia Tyne, please join me. This is Lieutenant Patricia Tyne, and what's really cool about the award she's about to get is her peers select the winner. This isn't the police chief deciding. Peers nominate people, then peers vote, and peers select the winner. And Tricia Tyne is this year's winner. And Tricia, we're on camera up here, too, so it's kind of, it's kind of a weird situation, because I always feel like I have my back to Gabe now, standing here, but... I ask our cops to do three basic things every day. Basic. I call them basic. They're not so basic. They're hard to do. Come to work every day and serve with passion and compassion. Be passionate about what you do. Love it, or find something else to do. Life is too short. And to be successful in this job, you have to be passionate, because you're going to be faced with a lot of challenges every day. And we have to be compassionate. We have to show people that we care, and we have to take care of people. And sometimes that's, that's hard to be compassionate when somebody's spitting in your face, or trying to punch you in the face, or trying to hurt you, okay? But it's still our job to show them compassion. I ask our police officers to serve the citizens like they would want a loved one served in a like situation. If they can do that every day on every call, we're going to be successful. Again, that's kind of hard when somebody's trying to punch you in the face. But we have to treat that person like they're somebody that we care about. Everybody gets treated with dignity and respect. Everybody gets a high-level service regardless. And then the last thing I ask everybody to do is leadership with a sense of urgency. And everybody in the police department is a leader. You don't have to have one of these things on your collar, or something on your shoulder. Everybody is a leader. We're dealing with people who may be having the worst day of their life. And I always use, like, the car burglary example, because a lot of us, have you ever had your car broken into? That's happened to me as the Marshalltown Police Chief. My car is sitting in my driveway at home, was broken into. And it's no fun. It's no fun. But for police officers, you know how many, in thirty years, you know how many of these cases I've investigated? Hundreds, right? For me, it's just another call. But for that person, it's the worst thing that's ever happened to them. And we have to be urgent in our response. Because that's what you pay us for. Tricia does that every day. She lives those ideals every day. I don't have to talk to her about it. She does it every day. And she's been doing it for nineteen years. Tricia is currently in charge of our day shift patrol, but she's been leading our peer support team for many years, because she loves the people that she works with, and she knows that they need help. She's a crisis negotiator. She'll talk your arm off if you ever get in a conversation. And she's also led our detective unit. And I want you to know something about this young woman. This is the best detective I've ever worked with. Bar none. She single-handedly, two years ago, solved a homicide that would have gone cold if not for her. Best detective I've ever worked with. She lives the expectations I set out for our staff. She loves serving others. She just loves people. She believes in service above self. She puts in the hours. She's always at work. She's always doing what's necessary to get the job done. If we had to pay her by the hour, we couldn't afford it. And if she tried to figure out how much she's making an hour, she probably would be sick to her stomach. But you better keep up if you're working with her. Because she has high standards, and she lives those standards every day. She'll also tell it like it is. She tells me exactly what I need to hear. And I appreciate that about her. I think, I think the most important thing I can say about Tricia, though, is if you need help, if you're dealing with a crisis, you want Tricia to be the one responding. Because she'll give you a top-level service, and she'll help you. She won't treat you like a number. She won't just take a report. She will help you. So, Tricia, thank you for everything that you do to serve our department and our community. Thank you for serving each day with passion and compassion, and thank you for your unwavering support of your team members and your community. And I'm going to call Robert Mahary up here, and he's got a great award for you, so congratulations on this incredible honor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Tupper, for your wonderful comments. As the chief just finished telling you about how great the Marshalltown Police Department is and the officers that work there are, and he also mentioned the collaborating agencies that we work with daily, weekly, monthly, yearly, the D C I, the A T F, the F B I, so many external agencies that step in and help us. I appreciate that he says I single-handedly did anything. Nothing in law enforcement is ever singular effort. It is seriously, as he mentioned, from the dispatchers who take the calls, to the officers who respond, to the detectives that show up to actually investigate deeper. It is really collaborative effort with everybody, and so I'm so humbled and so appreciative of this award, because it just represents the great work that everybody at the police department is doing. So, really, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wow. On behalf of the city council, we thank you, too. What an award. What a, what a force. And it makes us proud that we have our signs in the yard saying, "Back our blue." We've got a really good thing going here. We really do. It didn't start with the building, the new building. It didn't end with the new building. It's all in the people and how you treat others. So, thank you. That's great. Anybody else for years of service? I see we, we do have another anniversary, ten years. Brian not here? Okay, thanks. Well, even though he's not here, I'd like to say that Brian Demoss has been one of those friendly faces who's always been able to answer a question. If you have it, he's the one I intersect with. If there are any questions with, with our payroll department here in the city, and he's done a nice job. We need to keep people like Brian around here as well, in the finance department. Time for the consent agenda. If anybody would like to move for approval of that?
Counselor comments, please.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Thank you. I did. And I, I know that our city administrator didn't have any. I don't have any, but Gary, thank you.
This weekend, thanks, Your Honor. This weekend, I stumbled on the Corvette Club of Central Iowa coming to town and tried to do some valet parking for them, but they saw right through the guys down on Thirteenth Street. They specifically came to Marshalltown to try out the number-one hamburger at a hot dog restaurant. They didn't realize, some of them didn't realize that it started out as a hot dog restaurant. And one of them asked me if there was seating for twenty, there were twenty-five people that were here. And they asked me if there was seating for twenty-five inside Flying Elbow, and I said, sure, of course. You know, not at one time, but yes. So, they, they went in there, and I checked back later, and they all waited their turn. And they were saying some very positive things about Marshalltown, and they, they made some comments about, it was obvious, you know, and they knew what we'd been through. And even though we may be frustrated with the amount of work to get things back to normal, they thought we'd come a long way. So, just wanted to pass that along, that they had a really good time in Marshalltown. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else up here like to make any comments? Okay. Now I'd solicit that motion.
I'd make the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Roll call on the consent agenda.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. What's on the agenda?
Approve the minutes for the May ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, and the bill is an amount of one million, seven hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Approve liquor license renewals for Get and Go Convenience Store Number Thirty-four at thirty-three oh two South Center Street. Get and Go Convenience Stores Number Thirty-five at nine oh two West Lincoln Way. El Portal at seventeen sixteen South Center Street. J B's Bar at nine fifteen Turner Street. Approval of renewal applications for State of Iowa Retail cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor licenses through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three for Fairway Stores, Inc., Number four sixty-seven at one oh two West Anson Street. Walgreens Number zero three one nine six at five East Anson Street. Seven Rios Liquor Store, one twenty East Main Street. Goldland Asian Food at eleven East State Street. Approval of civil service list for parking enforcement officer and police officer. Approval of April two thousand twenty-two financial statements. Resolution authorizing the use of council-designated local option sales tax for public safety camera program. Resolution amending personnel policy one point four, appropriate use of the city of Marshalltown's computing, network resources, and equipment. Resolution amending the policy for the examination and copying of public records. Resolution approving a development agreement with Sims Company, LLC for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar catalyst building remediation grant for the creation of upper-story housing. Resolution to approve a second six-month extension of time to complete the city code upgrade grant work for two-ten East Main Street. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the Riverview Park Stormwater Pump Station retaining wall. Resolution approving a development agreement with Joseph and Janelle Carter for the three hundred thousand dollar downtown housing grant. Resolution approving contract change order number eight for the Airport Hangar and Terminal Project Number A R P one nine zero zero two, a decrease of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Resolution allowing open containers on public waves for a neighborhood block party. And resolution to amend the policy and procedures for the personally identifiable information and protected personally identifiable information for the city of Marshalltown.
Thank you. Well, that's saved us about twenty minutes, and that's good for tonight. Appreciate it. How about motions? The first one of which is what?
Motion to approve a five-day liquor license for the Impala Ballroom at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds Arena with outdoor service for a rodeo and concert on June eleventh.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. The Impala Ballroom is hosting a concert and a rodeo at the Fairgrounds on June eleventh. They plan to have one of these events each month this summer.
Very good. Any other comments or questions up here, or by the public? Let's call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. On to the next one.
Motion to approve a new Class C liquor license with outdoor service for Midnight Ballroom, LLC at fifteen oh one South Seventeenth Avenue.
I'd motion, make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clear a second? One sec. And discussion on this one?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the liquor application for Midnight Ballroom. They are opening the new reception hall, Midnight Garden, and you've already previously approved the outdoor service area.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by the council or public? Let's call the roll on this one.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Both of those have carried. On to the third and last one.
Motion to approve a temporary outdoor service amendment for the nine eighteen for June twelfth.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. The nine eighteen is going to host a Blessing of the Bikes event this year on June twelfth. They have requested a temporary service amendment for the outdoor area to include the grass area around the establishment.
Okay. Anybody wish to make the motion?
We have a...
Oh, we have a motion.
Yeah, we have a first and a second.
Sorry. Well, should have had that third cup of coffee today. Discussion up here or out there? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks on the resolutions. What's our first one?
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the ward of contract for the State Street Reconstruction Project Number S T R two-one-zero-zero-four in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of six million, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Move for approval. Second?
Very good. Discussion.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. We opened a bids this past Tuesday for this project. Our estimate on this project was five million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand and change. We had two valid bids on this project. The low bid was construct in the amount of six million, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. We did issue three addendums during the bid process of that, which bumped the engineer's estimate up. So, the overall low bid is about five percent over what was estimated. We are recommending approval of this, and we've outlined a way to fund that, that overage. So, in the memo that I have pulled up here, we have a table of what the previous planned budget was for this project and kind of where we're proposing to modify some of those funds coming from. And I'll go through that line by line. Same thing on the G O bond. No recommending of changes there. For the ARPA funds, that's where you're seeing the biggest change on that. Currently, we have about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars of unobligated ARPA funds, and we are recommending approval tonight to go ahead and allocate those to this project. We kind of had held on those previously, knowing that there was a good possibility with the bidding environment that we're in tonight and this year, to go ahead and need additional funds. In addition, the Edgewood Street Extension Project that you guys awarded two weeks ago, that came in under budget. So, we are recommending reallocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds that were previously on that project to this project. In addition to that, if you look at the Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Fund... Um, in addition to that, if you look at the Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Fund, um, previously, we had an estimate of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars to apply towards this project. After we reviewed the bid, I have outlined in the memo kind of where those utilities fell, um, and the sanitary sewer actually came in under budget. Um, so we are recommending going ahead and using the, the funds from the sanitary sewer funds that are a part of those bid items. In addition to that, um, we're holding, um, Water Works at five hundred thousand. We are recommending reducing the stormwater fund and utilizing the ARPA funds there. That'll just keep a lesser number of revenue sources towards the project. Um, we also have some storms who are expensive that have come in over budget on some other projects. Um, and this is just a way to kind of help balance those items. Um, so with that, we are open to questions, um, but the city is recommending to go ahead and proceed with this. Um, construction timeline-wise, we have heard back that there's about a six to eight month delay on some of the materials on part of this project. Um, which is why we had opened up that construction timeline window. Um, so I would be ninety-five percent confident that you're not going to see any construction this year, um, and that we'll be looking at construction in twenty twenty-three. Um, potentially twenty twenty-four as well. We did give them two construction seasons, um, to go ahead and do that. Um, so with that, I will open it up for questions.
Any questions by the council?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Um, I don't have any questions, but, uh, I have a comment. It's nice to see a Marshalltown company get that.
Agreed. Yep.
I'm glad I didn't answer the question while my flat tire was being fixed today on State Street. About when are they gonna start?
Yeah. I mean, we did review the bids, um, and if you look at the, the next lowest bidder was about one point six million dollars higher. Um, so when you look at the market rate and what contractors are available, you know, while it's over the estimate we had, um, we're still doing better than some other contractors. And we absolutely appreciate the, the local contractor in this case.
Anybody else up here?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
We've got three questions for you, Heather. Um, has the Marshalltown Water Works committed five hundred thousand for each of the four streets?
Uh, when you say each of the four streets?
Main, Church and Lynn?
No. Um, five hundred thousand has only been committed thus far for this project.
Are we planning on to pursue that on the other streets?
We will absolutely have additional discussions with Marshalltown Water Works.
Because I'm assuming we're gonna replace water mains on all streets.
Uh, that is the intent, yes.
And then, um, change orders will be funded from where?
So in my memo, I've outlined, um, that this funding scenario that you have on your screen provides about thirty-eight thousand dollars in, uh, additional funding. Obviously, that's not necessarily a lot for a project this size. Um, anytime we would bring a change order to you, um, I would also bring a potential funding source for that. Um, the way that we've done this right now, you know, an easy one is while the sanitary sewer fund, um, has been reduced to that five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar mark, that is just those bid items. It's totally eligible to pay for the pavement above the sanitary sewer through that fund as well. So that may be a, a possible solution for change orders. Um, but again, kind of, we'll see what those change orders are and, and try to allocate the funding scenario at that time.
Is it fair to say that historically, we could see change orders between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this project?
Um, the biggest unknown probably on this project is what we're gonna get into for soils.
Okay.
Um, and contaminated soils. We do have money set aside that we bid out, but that is an estimate. Until you get into construction, it's, it's very unknown. Um, you know, it's in general, we like to try to reserve five percent of the project, um, for change.
So we're hoping for the best and expecting some things?
Correct.
Okay. Then the last one is, um, if the construction season for this first street is moved back to twenty-three and twenty-four, does that mean Main Street won't really ha, the next street's Main Street, right?
Uh, that is correct. The next phase is Main Street in addition to one block of Center Street.
And we won't put that out for bid until this project's completed?
Um, I think that's a council decision to happen at a different time of when do you want to start the engineering on that and for what construction year? So we'll, we'll be having that conversation sooner rather than later.
So we'll have a, a, a discussion item, and then we'll have some examples of some timetables, right?
Yeah, I mean, this was six months of, I, I think it was October first was about the time we started the engineering on this. And, um, here we are in, in, uh,
May.
May, you know, with bids. So, uh, Main Street, I think, uh, we've already been warned is going to be more complicated because there will be more owners and possible more situations with faults. So I think the longer period of time that we have for the planning and design on that, the, the better will be.
Then I would say, I would suggest we start tomorrow.
We also, um, you know, have applied, um, for that raise grant for Highway fourteen. Um, and kind of, it's nice to, to coordinate when we find out the answer on that grant, how that may impact, uh, schedules and construction in Marshalltown too.
When we find, remind me when we find out again on that one?
August.
Yeah, August, September, later this year.
August twelfth is the federally mandated deadline for notification.
There you go.
All right. Thanks, Heather. Thanks, your honor.
Thanks, Jessica.
Anybody else up here? Anybody in the public like to comment? Okay. Well, before we vote, Heather, I just have to say thank you for being on staff now to be handling stuff like this. Holy cow. All right, roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
That carried. All right. Next and last resolution.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the twenty twenty sanitary sewer C I P P project number S A N two-one zero zero one in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of four million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and ten cents.
I'll move for approval, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. Um, this project is for the sanitary sewer C I P P project. It's doing, uh, sanitary sewer work throughout the entire community. Um, most of this will be work that'll be less invasive to the surface, um, and using, uh, a liner to line existing sanitary sewer mains, um, with the addition of several point repairs. Um, the construction is estimated, uh, was estimated to cost four million, one hundred and forty-one thousand. We received three bids. I read aloud two of those three bids, and one was thrown out because they did not acknowledge the addendum that was issued. Um, of those two bids that were read aloud, the lowest was for Municipal Pipe Tool Company. And their, uh, bid was four million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. This is fifteen point one percent over the estimated construction cost. Um, it's about six hundred and twenty-six thousand is what that, that equates to. We did review the bid items, um, and we understand, um, some of those that came in over budget were largely related to the point item, point repair items. Um, so in other words, when you line a sewer, if there's a bad spot in the sewer, you can't line through that. You have to dig that location up before you can line through it. Um, we evaluated whether if we should pull those segments out to help get the project back in closer where we are budget-wise. Um, but also remembering that the purpose of this project is a result of a two thousand and twelve consent order through D N R to make improvements to the sanitary sewer system. That consent orders timeline originally was, uh, to have been completed by this point. And the sewer rates had been adjusted for that previous timeline. Um, as a result of that, there's still one additional phase on this project through D N R, um, that we've pushed back till twenty twenty-five. And previously, it was to be constructed right now. Um, that has allowed us to have, uh, some cash on hand that we can cover this overage, and we are recommending to go ahead and proceed. It's not gonna get any cheaper if we wait, and it's still gonna be something that needs to be done. So on your screen now, um, I'm proposing a scenario where we do that S R F loan that we're combining with the wastewater treatment facilities project. Um, that loan will be later this year. So pulling three point nine million out of that loan and the rest, uh, about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand would be cash on hand. On this project, the substantial completion date is September of twenty twenty-three, and it will take that long. It is a lot of work, and they will be all over town. Um, and with that, I would recommend approval to Municipal Pipe and Tool and, uh, entertain any questions.
Floor is open for council questions or comments.
How long are these repairs supposed to last?
So like a point repair location itself, um, I would anticipate any given location to be less than a month of closure at that particular location. More realistically, um, we'll probably be able to open it up to a lane of traffic within a week or two.
Okay. How about generally the repairs that we're doing, though? How long is the project life?
Uh, oh, I see what you're saying. Yep, gotcha. Okay, so a sanitary sewer, um, you know, expected life is about fifty years. This lining process is gonna rejuvenate that, basically give it a brand-new life. So, uh, fifty years, but to be honest, we've got pipes in there eighty, ninety years. So, um, potentially a little bit longer than that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Uh, Jeff stole my question, the life of fifty years. My other question is, we've been doing this for years, if, if I'm, if I'm right. We've lined sewer mains, main sewer mains before.
Oh, absolutely.
So where are we at with the city? I mean, are we chasing our tail with this, or are we keeping up with giving these lines new life?
Um, that's a tough question, because there's always more to be done, always more that can be done. Um, right now, we feel really good about the ones, um, that are in this project. Um, these are the, the worst ones that we know. Um, we do, uh, a project right now where we, uh, clean and jet a fifth of the sewers every year. Um, as part of that project, about ten percent of those we're televising, so we're kind of getting an idea of the condition and status of the different ages. And that's where these lining, um, projects are proposed from. Um, so there's still a lot left to be done. Um, but you know, uh, the next phase of this project is actually gonna be switching to manholes as opposed to sewer mains themselves. Um, so there's different aspects of the project, and we're kind of spreading that around, grouping them together to get the best cost.
And when will we line again? In your, your best guess?
Um.
When will the next lining project come to us? It's three, four years down the road?
I would anticipate a large one not coming to you in the next three or four years. It would be after that point. Because our next, our next, uh, punch list item is gonna be towards manhole rehab.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks, your honor.
Sure. Anyone else up here? Anyone in the public? Well, let's call the roll on this one.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. That carried as well. Onto ordinances, uh, item H, and we got three of those. What's our first one?
Ordinance one-five-zero-four-one to amend the code of ordinance to City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter one-eighteen Peddlers, Solicitors, Transient Merchants, Third Reading.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, just as a reminder, this, uh, amendment is going to change the time restrictions for peddlers and solicitors from nine AM to seven PM. It removes the seven-day calendar restriction for transient merchants and also creates a twenty-four-hour public permit for transient merchants to operate on public property, which includes Main Street.
Okay, third time around. Any further discussion up here at the council level? Out on the public level? Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Carried. Good. Second one?
Ordinance one-five-zero-four-two to amend the code of ordinance to City of Marshalltown, Iowa, repealing Chapter fifty-eight vegetation and enacting and adopting a new Chapter fifty-eight vegetation, Second Reading.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance which makes a number of changes to Chapter fifty-eight, including, uh, just updating the term, um, terrace to public right-of-way, um, as well as creates the compost utility and creates the ability for the council to create a compost utility fee.
All right. Time for discussion. About, because we had discussion. Any council comments or questions or public?
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Um, in this chapter is the creation of a compost utility. If we can't create a urban forest utility without the public vote, how can we create a compost utility without the public vote? Anyways, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing no one else jumping to the mic, let's call the roll.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the third and last.
Ordinance one-five-zero-four-three to amend the code of ordinance to City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by repealing Code Section ninety point zero three six, Dogs at Public Events, Second Reading.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Discussion on this one?
Yes, your honor. This amendment is going to repeal the code, the code section that prohibits dogs, um, coming to public events. And it allows the organizer to make the decision if they would like to allow that. They would be in charge of enforcing that rule. Uh, the police department will continue to, uh, enforce dogs at large at events if necessary.
Thank you. Council comments or questions? Public comment? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried as well. Onto discussion items. The first one of which is Urban Renewal Area Seven Project, Carl of Marshalltown.
Yes, your honor. Um, so back in, uh, I did a little history here because it was actually back in, um, January when we had a first conversation about Urban Renewal Area Number Seven, uh, which has been a longstanding recommendation from the Highway fourteen corridor study to basically create a, a new urban renewal area that would essentially start along, um, Third Avenue, Highway fourteen at Bromley Street, because that is where the current downtown, uh, border is and extend north up to city limits, um, and catch over to the, uh, Fourth, Fifth Avenue area. And basically just catch everything that fronts, um, the Highway fourteen corridor as part of our revitalization efforts for that area. As you're aware, um, Carl of Marshalltown has, uh, purchased the property and has taken on the renovation of the North Building at one thousand North Third Avenue, and they will be building new, um, on nine oh six North Third Avenue, which is the South parcel as well. And so we had had, uh, some discussions about, uh, an incentive for them related to tax increment financing, which is, urban renewal is the, um, tool to work with tax increment financing because we do not have a tax abatement or urban revitalization area, um, along this corridor, um, at this point in time. And so, uh, we, we had some conversations, and we'll say there, I didn't upload a new one, but Option Two is, is incorrectly stated there. I did place, um, some new, uh, spreadsheets on your list. Um, we talked about three options, uh, basically looking at, um, of, of what they have initially proposed. I will say, as I broke down the new assessed value, because I was questioning this after talking with, um, Tony Mills from, uh, Carl, uh, I had three point five million as a likely assessed value on the North side, and then eight point four million for assessed value on the, um, South side. And so they haven't finalized their, their South side plan quite yet, but are getting close with it. Um, but I do feel like based on the square footage calculations I had done looking at some other things, that it's probably a good number. Uh, but again, all of this is a guess until you have, um, a, a true assessment on a product. So, uh, what I did is basically did some calculations, looking at, you know, if, if you have three years, one hundred percent, which is our, you know, tax abatement in some areas of the city, what does that look like? And that's where Option One really got you to that, that similar standard. Option Two was just basically a way to sort of extend, um, out over multiple years, uh, but also keeping the same number. You'll note that's a change on what I handed out. Um, but what it does is this, this scenario does not take into consideration any, um, valuation changes where we would expect that, uh, every two years likely, there would likely be some sort of valuation adjustment. But we set the not-to-exceed number higher so that, uh, over time, you take advantage more so of any valuation changes. And then there was Option Three, which was a ten-year sliding scale, um, again, also looking at setting a not-to-exceed number at a little higher, um, level so that, uh, valuations can be, um, factored into this as well. Um, in conversations, uh, with, uh, Tony, they have come back saying that Option Three is the preferred option, which I would also say is the preferred option of staff at this point. Um, that, the reason for that is that it might extend things out over a ten-year period. But in the first year, um, all taxing entities will see some valuation growth into what their bottom lines are, uh, which would include the city, the school district, and the county as well. And so, um, the next steps, if this is agreeable to the council, would be to get this documented into an urban renewal plan. Uh, we are required by state law to state our specific projects, um, and use of tax increment financing in each urban renewal plan. So those two things would then really tie themselves together and move forward, um, with looking at, uh, basically hope. I don't know if it could be done by June thirteenth, but if we were ready to go, we'd be ready to set the public hearing on the urban renewal area on June thirteenth. And then, um, there's a kind of a, uh, two, two-meeting waiting period on that one before we could bring that back for council, uh, for a public hearing and council consideration before then considering the development agreement. So, uh, this doesn't move very quickly, um, but it is something that So uh this doesn't move very quickly, um, but it is something that we we would like to get started with sooner rather than later. Um, knowing we have a three-week delay between um now and our next meeting.
Questions or comments up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Um, this is a huge project for the North End of town and it's much needed. Uh, we're seeing improvements up and down. Other businesses on Third Avenue are talking about improving their products or projects too, that and businesses that they have. Um, it's turning into a catalyst for uptown and I for Third Avenue and I um I'm in favor of the option three. I think that makes the most sense anyway.
There sure is a lot of uh new construction going on out there. I drove past over the new number today to see it. And the Lennox Building is looking pretty pretty new from a new front there too. It's kind of fun to drive around town these days. Other discussion up here, though?
Your Honor, I have a question for Jessica, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, can you, I know you don't have a map handy, but can you remind me of the borders of that TIF zone that we set up?
Um.
Bromley North, right?
Bromley North.
And it did it stop at Third Avenue?
Um.
To the west? Was it just?
Yeah, so it basically captures on the west side, it goes to the alley until uh I think we skip around the cemetery.
Right.
Um, and then basically jut up and catch these parcels just because they're larger than kind of the.
How far east did it go?
Isn't it on the agenda so we could just look at it?
It I was.
I thought it was.
I don't think the map is.
Um, oh, I think I did uh put it in the original memo. So this this basically is a good representation, not, you know, the precise with borders and things. Um, but we we do actually leave this little segment out, but essentially we capture backside of the alleys um on both the east and west side um through kind of that residential and commercial mix area. And then when we get up to Marion Street, we capture basically the avenues. Um, Edgewood uh North is now zoned as an industrial um land there, and so uh there's there's a different use there. We did not include Edgewood Industrial Park in this because that is basically a greenfield project where we will be using um some blight and slum uh criteria on this one um for the plan.
Hey, the reason I'm asking is because of of Carl's project and because we changed this, um, I'm getting some questions about um from some other business owners in that area, and I just couldn't remember the boundary, so. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Um, um. Have you been approached by anybody else in the area? Has the city been approached yet?
Um, I have not been approached by anybody else in the area um on any any other projects at this point.
All right. And then for TIF, it takes what, about three hundred thousand or more to even get it into a ballpark figure to cover?
Yeah.
Making the project feasible?
Yeah, that's that's where, I mean, we have, y- you know, that's where I always like to do the comparison with what is the three-year one hundred percent tax abatement to really start to figure out, should we put that zone into place as well um based on the investment level? Um, yeah, we, I mean, with any TIF project, we have uh about ten thousand dollars of legal costs. And so that's where we're not typically getting reimbursed from the developer um of a project on that. Um, so there there is a time effort uh as well as legal um cost that really goes into where does it make sense to bring something forward to the council?
And I didn't mean to get off subject. I just see this, using the words of other counselors, for other areas of town, this is a huge catalyst for that avenue. You know, Third Avenue. So I just wanted to see where we're at with uh other things coming forward, so.
I.
It's a great starting point. I'm I'm like uh like Mike, I this is a this is a good thing for especially for our side of town.
I I think it would be very difficult to think of when was the last time that you're talking about, you know, uh, and true construction cost, you're, I think, over twenty million between the two projects potentially?
Potentially, so I mean, some of this isn't.
You can.
You gotta come up?
Yeah.
Tony Mills, Carlotta Group, uh, thanks for allowing me the minute to speak. Um, so yeah, right now, I mean, we're already over six million uh invested just in concrete and what you see right now. Um, so by the time this is all said and done, we'll be pushing probably close to twenty million. Um, twenty million dollars in facilities, in grounds improvements, uh, concrete, you'll see some displays uh similar to what we have at other locations on each corner. Rock displays, vehicle displays, um, you know, anything that's left, it's grass will be manicured and and taken care of. Um, not much out there. Um, but we've already, you know, we've come in, uh, the city has allowed us to come in and clean up a lot of the brush and the trees behind the building. Um, so really got all that cleaned up. There was fence that was uh damaged uh from the storms. So we've cleaned all of that up at our own expense um on our own nickel, just to basically give us the opportunity to move forward with construction, so. Um, you know, all in the hopes of uh really starting, you know, to clean that area of town up. Uh, as you come into that area of town on Highway fourteen there, um, you know, we hope that that's a springboard for the community and and that, you know, our investment there um in talking with the city versus moving out towards the highway. Um, you know, most of our locations um uh that we have right now, with the exception of Webster City, are right off uh the interstate, so. Um, you know, this was a choice by us to stay and invest in the heart of the community. Um, so we're appreciative of any anything that the city can do to help us out and and springboard our um construction, so.
Your Honor. Tony, um, I appreciate all this that you're doing in the first ward. But the the big question is, after you spend all this money with all the shortages around the world, will you have any cars to sell?
Yeah, so, um, we're still selling cars um at all the locations, so factory challenges have been, you know, obviously key. Um, especially if you drive by Ankeny, um, you don't see two thousand cars on the ground and you never will um moving forward. So the factory's recommendations as they move forward is thirty days in inventory, thirty days in transit uh to the dealers. So um right now, um, you know, everything that's hitting the ground that you see is sold. Um, we have sold orders out um that we can probably fulfill for the next twelve months. Um, it's just kind of the way that the industry is. Uh, the good thing about the store here in Marshalltown is if you want a Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, or Ram, um, sold orders go to the top of the production list, which is different and unique than most factories. So if you have a sold order, you will see that car in production and on the ground probably within eight to ten weeks. So a little bit different than Ford uh GM products that we deal with. Um, but yeah, you'll you'll probably never see inventory levels to what they were um pre-COVID. Um, but that's okay from a dealer's standpoint. Um, it makes us a little more profitable without carrying all that interest, so.
We appreciate you coming to town.
Yeah, we're happy to be here. So, um, you know, again, we thank the community. Uh, Marshalltown has always been a great community for Carl Chevrolet, especially in Ankeny. I can show you numbers, market share numbers of what we sell out of Ankeny in this community. Um, and we're probably one of the top dealers in the state that sell here in Marshalltown. So Carl has always been very, very appreciative of the Marshalltown community, the people that make the trek down to Ankeny and buy the vehicles from us. Um, so it was really a natural fit by, you know, being able to have the dealerships here in the community um and continue to serve the the residents of Marshalltown because it's been such a very good community for us and in our business, so.
I'm sure the newspaper appreciates having the ads that we're seeing daily. Uh, that's that's good. It's good for everybody to see the competition, that sort of thing. I'll never forget the first call I got after the tornado uh to donate some money was Carl. Uh, I've got a check here, and I probably shouldn't embarrass him by the twenty thousand dollar check that he had, but uh who do I make it payable to? I sell a lot of cars at Marshalltown. And uh that generated, I posted that and that generated uh customers, uh citizens saying he's a customer of the Lexus dealership down there. And sure enough, I called Lexus and uh they didn't quite match it, but but they did too, and that that was what started that kind of ball rolling way back when. So Carl's been good to this town.
Yeah, and and a portion of what we do in the community goes back, right? So um everything that you see in the community as far as being active in the community media, um, the community schools. Um, so I've met with the athletic director up here. Um, so hopefully as we move forward, we'll have a better partnership with the school district, community festivals and events. Um, so you'll see our presence here. Um, hopefully that's good for the residents and and for those organizations as well. But, you know, Carl's very, very big on giving back to the community, and we hope to continue that um here in Marshalltown as we move forward, so.
Thank you. Your Honor, I would I would second or shadow Mike that if this is the the option that uh Carl's wants and what the city likes, then I would agree that that's the direction we go.
I want to, should I treat that as a motion and second for staff direction?
Do you need a motion?
I I would like a motion directing staff to move forward with option three.
Are we ready for a motion or are there other questions?
I guess I haven't opened to the public. We could do that.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Welcome to the town. Uh, this is nothing, my comment is not directed at you. Um, TIF takes money out of other taxing entities. You have another option to use, and that would be create a ten-year commercial tax abatement program so that you don't take money out of the school system. Um, this has been done before. The senior center on Center on Second and Main has a special little tax abatement just for themselves. That's a ten-year sliding scale. You could fix this problem by making a ten-year tax abatement. Um, the schools do not get a hundred percent backfill. They only get a twenty-five percent backfill, and the county gets no backfill. So you're basically voting to take money out of other taxing entities. Uh, I guess they don't care. They're not here, so.
Anyone else in the public like to discuss this?
The the one thing I would like to point out, and it's why I have this increment column below. So the frozen base value of both of those parcels is uh eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Every taxing entity still collects off of that. And that frozen base value is the twenty twenty-two value because we don't have an existing district, so we'll freeze those values. So everybody will still collect what their current value or what off the current value. It's anything that new that this is really looking at incentivizing.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we are now ready for that motion and second.
Uh, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that uh we direct staff to move forward on option three for Carl Chevrolet.
Second.
Roll call.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has instruction, and Tony, thanks for coming up. You don't need to stick around.
He's got one more item, so he needs to stick around for one more item.
Well, you do need to stick around. I stand corrected twice at least tonight. All right.
So I think probably the more important reason of why Tony is here tonight is because uh we've been going uh on in conversation for multiple weeks now about purchasing some city property. I've got kind of a zoomed-in picture here. This is the South Building, nine oh six North Third Avenue. The city does own the the land behind it, and I can pull this up on Beacon, so you can see kind of a zoomed-out view. Um, they need some additional land to move one of the pole barn buildings that is currently on the North Parcel uh to basically house all of their outdoor exterior maintenance equipment and everything. Uh, as Tony had mentioned, you see their other locations. They do a very fine job of maintaining things externally. And I think it's, is it this building right there? Yeah, so it's this building right here that they want to to move um off of the North Parcel to basically uh house things for that purpose. As we reviewed internally, this is an area where we do have some um floodplain. Um, it is, you know, right behind the levee, but it's owned by the city. Uh, as we looked at what setbacks would be required for the size of the building, uh, we did come up with a one hundred and fifty feet uh or fifty-five foot wide, one hundred and fifty foot long parcel, about point one nine acres. Um, that could be sold off of this larger piece right here to accommodate that building. Um, Tony has said he would like this to happen very quickly, and so I think he's familiar with government processes, though. And so that's the the reason why we've uh proposed here that um uh an offer to buy would come back on um the June thirteenth meeting, which would acknowledge the flood risk, um, agree to them recording an affidavit of non-separation so that this parcel um basically becomes part of this parcel. We don't normally approve uh, you know, new parcels being created where there's no right-of-way. So that would be one of the requirements there is those two would have to be tied together. Uh, that the buyer would be responsible for the survey costs and that we would use the formula from our uh real property disposal process looking at the adjacent values, um, which basically comes up to estimated at a point one nine acre cost of six thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents. And so he has agreed that that is what they would do. We then avoid an appraisal or trying to determine anything else for a fair market since this parcel could not be sold to anybody else. It doesn't make sense to go out for a bid or anything like that. So pro- proposed process, assuming a survey could be done sooner rather than later, uh, we would we would order the survey if you said, let's move on with this tonight, just knowing that there's weeks involved with that, um, have the formal offer to purchase on the June thirteenth meeting and hopefully in July be able to start the process for the conveying of the property with the public heari- setting a public hearing and holding a public hearing.
The mics are opening up here for the council.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Jessica, since we've set a precedent with that sale of property on South Seventh Avenue that we're selling for, you we're classifying fair market value as the appraised value.
Assessed value.
Yes, so I'm sorry, assessed value. So if this is assessed at one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents, to stay consistent, I mean, I'd love to have them pay median between the three of those rather than average, but why wouldn't we just sell it to them based on that number alone so we stay consistent with the land sale on South Seventh Avenue?
Because the policy does allow for either calculation. When you're talking about, you know, smaller residential lots that are grouped together, those are generally not going to see significant fluctuations in valuation like we see here. Whereas truly, this is going to become um what is now essentially part of floodplain, city floodplain property with no value or use and no recent assessment either, that that's where we included the adjacent properties in determining that calculation, which is another way to determine fair market value per our policy.
Okay. I I disagree, I see what you're doing, but I disagree with the, you know, we're going to get value out of the property when it gets taxed with that building on it and everything. So I would make a motion, if if Carl Chevrolet has already agreed that they're acceptable to this spending six thousand dollars, I would make a motion that they spend the one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents for the land and the balance be a donation to the fireworks fund.
Uh, just just one point of clarification. So that's a per-acre price, so if you take that down to basically, you know, um, two tenths of an acre, you're talking about, that's uh, can someone do quick math?
It's not very much.
Yeah, so that's that's what your proposal would be. It's not one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents.
Maybe, what would that be, two hundred thousand dollars?
Eight hundred.
Huh?
Um, well, I don't trust my math.
Four hundred?
That's even better for the fireworks fund.
I I hate to. Bring on fireworks committee.
I'm sorry, there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, uh, all right, it's it's time to just declare, you're out of order again, Gary. Sorry, no. Uh, but I didn't hear a quick second either. Okay. Is there any other motion anybody would like to make?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we uh direct staff to move forward with the agreed purchase price and the general agreement that the staff has come up with and bring it back on June thirteenth.
Is there a second to that?
I'd second that.
All right. I haven't invited other discussion up here or out there, so let me do that now for anybody. Nobody's rushing to speak. Roll call, roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Carried as well, and again, Tony, we love to have you around here, but uh drive safely back to Ankeny or Des Moines.
All right. Thank you.
There you go. Okay, next item. Discussion of remaining two thousand seven bond funds from the Police and Fire Building. Diana?
Good evening. Diana Snyder, Finance Director. So as you recall, um, we recently settled with the Mason from the Police and Fire Building. So now we're looking at the remaining funds um left over, and we have about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So um through this conversation discussion tonight, I want you to remember two words, and one is general. So general corporate-purpose bonds include but are not limited to public buildings, and that's what the Police and Fire Building was categorized as, a general corporate-purpose bond. And it can also include airports, swimming pools, recreation centers. So if you remember, a general corporate-purpose bond requires either a city special election with a sixty percent supermajority approval or a reverse referendum hearing if the amount borrowed is less than seven hundred thousand. The Police and Fire Building of seventeen point five million project was approved via an election with two bonds. and the two-thousand-seventeen bond of twelve thousand, twelve million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. So the other word I want you to remember is essential corporate purpose. So that can go for streets, uh, bridges, sidewalks, et cetera. So as I mentioned, um, five-hundred-and-forty-thousand is leftover of the two-thousand-seventeen bond funds, and that is a general corporate purpose. So the bond is coming up on its five years of issuance, so if we can spend it by the end of September, then we only need to pay for one arbitrage computation. So an arbitrage, arbitrage computation is when you take bond funds and invest it. So, you know, we get the bond funds in when it's issued, we put it in the bank, it earns interest, you know, along the way as we're spending it down. So, uh, usually at the end, when you, when you're done spending it, um, then you do an arbitrage calculation. But we're not done spending it, but because it's been five years, we do have to do one. So, um, this bond is also a large issuance for the city, and not having it spent within five years could draw more attention to it for IRS audit. So our solution for this is that, uh, if you approve and move forward with, uh, what I'm proposing tonight, at the next council meeting, you'll set a public hearing date for June twenty-seventh to redirect the general corporate-purpose bond funds to essential corporate-purpose funds. Then we can use the remaining funds on street sidewalk projects, et cetera, uh, for either costs we've already incurred, so there's a timeframe that we can go back and get those for construction at sixty days, for, um, professional fees such as engineering, we can go back farther than that, um, or costs that we're incurring during the summer for street projects. So the effect is, we're just kind of flip-flopping the sources of the documents. Um, we're not asking for new projects, we're just, uh, spending our current projects that you approved at budget time. And so for the two-thousand-seventeen bond, we would decrease the building, which was the general corporate purpose, and increase streets, which is the essential corporate purpose. And then, for example, on our two-thousand-twenty-one bond, we would do the opposite, so we would increase the building, and what I said, if needed, because we were talking about, do we need a bigger generator for the police and fire building? There's also, um, a, a room, ventilation room that needs updated, that's getting close to, uh, being completed this summer, so we would decrease the streets. If you decided not to do the, uh, generator, then we would just keep it as-is. So there's really two separate actions, um, but the action I need you to, to take tonight, if you agree, is to go ahead and, and set the public hearing at the next meeting for the June twenty-seventh meeting, um, to change the, the general corporate-purpose bond funds to essential corporate-purpose bond funds. Are there any questions?
Mike? Your Honor, if I may?
Okay.
Are we done with the building? I mean, that's the simple, this money is for the building, correct?
It's for the building.
Yeah, so there, there are some projects that have been hanging out there, one of them is that the, through the deratio, we figured out that the generator is not sized to run the entire building, and so, um, just today Heather was able to get an updated quote that's maybe not a complete quote, uh, for resizing that generator and installing a larger generator. There's still some sidewalk projects that need to be done, and then I think we still do have some expenses coming in for some other, um, repairs and things that didn't end up getting done with the construction project, and I'm not sure if the two chiefs or Heather have anything more to add to that.
I, I guess the reason I ask is, I don't feel comfortable taking this money away from a building, that we know we have issues with that ventilation, and that we, we need to finish the, the, the taxpayers voted for this great building, let's finish it for the, for the people that are using it.
So I would say then probably what we would recommend is, rather than just bringing one public hearing next, back to you next time for adding the essential to two-thousand-seventeen, would be also adding the general to two-thousand-twenty-one, so that it gives us the authority for the money that we still have remaining in the two-thousand-twenty-one bond for the purpose of accomplishing these projects, so that we're doing those at the same time rather than kind of piecemealing it as we're, we've initially proposed. That would be the way to get it done, where it's just truly swapping uses of money so that we can spend down the funds quicker than we'll be able to on, on finishing the, the items that remain.
Yeah, I'm okay with whatever you have to do, behind-the-scenes paperwork, you know, but let's not, let's finish the building, I guess is my concern. So, thank you, Your Honor.
I, I noticed Heather was coming a little closer to the microphone, and maybe if you were talking to people about the, uh...
Heather Thomas, Public Works. Um, right now I'm assisting with the building and facility side of things, um, and the three projects that were mentioned as far as the sidewalks go, the ventilation issue, and the generator, the three items that are out there that we're working on this year. Um, we've gotten estimates, uh, we've made progress on the ventilation issue, um, we do have a resolution for that, and I am working with, uh, an outside firm to come on and, uh, get that wrapped up this summer. Um, so there are additional expenses, the intent is not to pull money out of the building fund, it's just a swap of where that fund is coming from.
Thank you. Other council comments or public comments? What sort of staff direction would you recommend I solicit?
I, I think, uh, you know, Councilmember Thompson brought up an interesting point, we weren't asking to, um, add the general to the two-thousand-twenty-one bond at this point in time, uh, but if that is something that you would like to see so that it's very clear in the public record of what we are doing, and, um, adding purposes to each of the bonds to allow for the funds to be spent from two-thousand-seventeen much sooner, uh, I think that's what we're looking for, is a, a motion to move forward with either one or two public hearings at the next council meeting.
Um, for the two-thousand-twenty-one bond, um, yes, we can, we can allocate some back to the building, we don't know that they need five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, it may be much less than that, um, so that's kind of why we, we're just gonna wait, but yes, we can do up to in the resolution.
Your Honor? Your Honor? I do love the idea about having a generator, and I can't believe this got missed when we build it, that powers the whole building, because through the disasters we've had, it'd be nice to have a building that can do everything, and then that would free up that other generator to go to another public building, so I gotta believe that's gonna eat up probably most of that five-hundred-and-forty-thousand.
It's, it's probably at least half of it.
Yeah, yeah.
But as Diana said, that there probably is not going to take up the full five-hundred-and-forty to accomplish those three.
So again, I'm okay with whatever paperwork, whatever hoops we have to jump through, I just don't wanna stop on a building that we know we have issues with, so whatever you guys have to do, I'm, I'm okay with that. Let's just get the building done, you know, to the, to what we, what the voters wanted when we passed these bond issues.
To, to just be very clear, staff can't do this, council has to.
I understand, but you tell us... Your Honor?
Yeah.
So are we more flexible if we do two public hearings next time?
I, it, it accomplishes it so that we don't have to come back, well, I mean, we'll obviously be coming back with, um, the generator because it's a large enough project, but, yeah, I mean, it gives us the ability to move some things probably quicker, um, than otherwise.
Yeah, I'd make the motion to do two public hearings next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion up here, out there? Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one, and on to fire department calls discussion.
Good evening, David Reiers from Marshawn Fire Department. So, as you will remember, back in April, I presented the annual report for the fire department, and one of the things that I pointed out in the annual report was what we refer to as overlapping calls is something that has been increasing exponentially over the last several years. Um, I'd like to start by saying thank you for the questions that I got from the council on clarification, and, uh, that's why we're here tonight, I was asked to provide more information on this, and in your council packet, you should find that breakdown of, of calls and when those overlaps occur. Um, to address one case, question that, that Counselor Kel had, it is absolutely all about time, as, as I'm sure when you look through that, that you could, you could see that, that that was, that was the case. So just to remind you, in, in, uh, two-thousand-twenty-one, we had seven-hundred-and-twenty incidences where that occurred, where, where both of our apparatus were out and all of our people were committed to calls. So far, for this year, so the first quarter and through the fifteenth of May, we're already at two-hundred-and-eighty-seven, and we're well on track to hit about seven-hundred-and-eighty this year. So, with that being said, I would, uh, I would entertain questions that you may have, um, that I can maybe clarify or give you some more information on.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
How are you handling all these, like, most of these calls seem to be EMS-related, what is your, are you diverting from the place where you've been called to as soon as you're able to leave and then go meeting, immediately to the next call, are you going back to the station, regrouping and sending out again? What does that look like?
Well, it just depends, it varies from day to day, sometimes, sometimes it's, it's going from one call to the next call, if, you know, if we have a unit that's tied up and then we get dispatched on another call, um, if they can clear and go handle that call, they will, if not, another, another unit has to come from the station and go, and go answer the call. So, it just varies from day to day. Um, one of the questions that was asked of me when I provided the annual report was, does staffing result, does an increase in staffing take care of the problem? And the answer to that is, to a certain extent, yes. I don't think you will ever get away from overlapping calls, you're always gonna have them, it's just the nature of the business. But does extra personnel help? Absolutely, it helps, and it helps not only from the EMS side but from the fire side. So, um, I just wanted to be clear, and, and, 'cause I think Counselor Isom, I think that was your question that you asked. So, yes, it does help. Um, is that something that's possible for the, for us to do right now, given our, uh, general budget, uh, general fund budget? Maybe, it's probably isn't. Um, but it's something that we need to think about, and it's something that we need to be looking at. It, it, there's no one solution to this problem, and this is not just a problem that is in Marshalltown, this is a nationwide problem, and it's, um, it's our, the population of our community is aging, we have people in our, in our community that don't have health insurance, so they use the nine-one-one system, uh, as their primary healthcare, we have just nine-one-one system abusers, um, it's a, it's a nationwide problem, it isn't just a Marshalltown problem, and, and there's not, there's not one easy solution to it. But it's definitely something that we need to look at, and it's definitely something that we need to start figuring out how we address it, and what do we, what do we look at to, to, to change it?
Are, are there any examples of what other communities have done?
Well, some communities have added staffing, uh, other communities do just exactly what we're doing, they just do the best they can to make as many calls as they can and hope they don't miss one. Um, I don't know if you've been watching, uh, I think KCCI's had this series on EMS in the state of Iowa, and it's a mess, um, but it's a mess all over the country, it isn't, like I said, it's not just an Iowa problem, or just a Marshalltown problem. Um, many fire departments across the state run the EMS service, um, in their communities. There's, uh, Unity Point here, um, Medic One in Davenport, um, the Cedar Rapids area is, is run by a, a, a third-party provider, so there's various different models of the, of provision of emergency medical services, but the primary one in the state is, is through fire departments. So I'm not advocating that's the way that we need to go, please don't miss, please don't misinterpret that, but just to answer your question, that's, that's what's happening in the state.
Um, one, if I may, um, so if someone's running a third-party, how are they being financed?
The third-party?
Yeah, if you're a third-party, if I wanna start up Mike's EMF, okay, and how, what, what would I do, charge a, charge an amount?
Well, the first thing you'd probably have to have is an agreement with the county or the municipality to provide the service.
Mm-hmm. But I'm just wondering about the financing.
That's, that's up, that's up to them, that's up, if you're gonna be a private ambulance service, then that purchase of equipment, everything is on you.
Chief, can you remind us of your obligation on a nine-one-one call regardless of, of the content or the need?
Sure, so, um, we first respond with the ambulance service, and a lot of times we're there first, and we initiate patient care, and then the ambulance comes in, and since they're the higher level of service, then they take over patient care, and then they're the ones, um, who are responsible with an agreement through the county, um, to transport, uh, transport those patients. So, so we first, we first respond, we, um, we eliminated some of our calls, we don't go to nursing homes, we don't go to healthcare facilities, um, we don't go to the veterans' home unless it's an employee, or we're called for assistance, so, so we've already cut those out, we've cut, we've cut out some of the calls that we were responding to, uh, before. So we have tried to limit, or tried to be selective on what we respond to, but the numbers just keep going up.
Maybe I asked it incorrectly, so what's the obligation on that call for you? You've eliminated some of them, can you further eliminate if needed? Or are you now covering the bare minimum of, of your obligation?
I, I think we're probably at that bare minimum, 'cause typically what we're running are shortness of breath, diabetic seizures, cardiac arrest, those types of things where, um, the extra set of hands and the extra people for lifting and carrying, um, are crucial not only to the ambulance crew but to the patient themselves.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I wanna clarify something in your answer, and, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't, we only have two paramedics on staff, the city, is that correct?
Correct.
You and, and, uh, Assistant Chief Cross?
Correct.
Okay, so when you say the higher level of service, if we get there first, we have EMT-certified firefighters?
Correct.
And they're replaced, when the ambulances get there, by paramedics?
Correct.
So that's the higher level, so we have to stay on-site until that paramedic gets there?
Yes, we have, we have to stay there.
Even if we get the call?
No, even, even if it's an EMT, when we relinquish care, it has to be somebody, a provider of the same level of care or higher. If not, we've abandoned them.
If we get there before the ambulance, and we get that call one minute after we get there, that second call, and they don't get there for three or four minutes, we don't, we don't dispatch out of there until they get there?
Correct.
And have it under control, obviously, have patient care.
Yep.
Okay, and then I wanna follow up, the other thing, you said, "We're at bare minimum," and I can see Assistant Chief Cross throwing darts at me right now because I'm gonna say this, the, the answer to Barry's question is, we stop going. And nobody wants that.
No, and, and I, I, I would have to recommend that I am against doing that.
I understand, but he's the one throwing darts at me right now.
The piller's in my eye line.
Yeah. But that is, the ultimate answer is if we can, cannot continue to miss fire calls, to miss other calls, something's gotta give, I mean, and that's what we're here talking about, is what do we do? Do we hire more staff? Do we continue to give free service to Unity Point, who's billing their patients for the, the, the paramedic's time, the supplies used, and I gotta believe we're using supplies too?
Correct.
And not getting reimbursed for them. We've got vehicle wear and tear that we're not getting reimbursed for, we've got labor that we're not getting, this, this, these people could be training, could be doing other things, or responding to fire calls, or getting cats out of trees, whatever you wanna call it. So that's why we're having this discussion, is we're providing a free service to the citizens of Marshawn, and the question is, do we wanna continue to do that when there's another entity that's billing the citizens of Marshawn for the same service?
Don't dis, don't disagree with you, Counselor.
Yeah.
But, but the way, the way we view it is, if, if you have an emergency at your house and you call nine-one-one, you probably don't care who shows up, whether it's an ambulance or whether it's a, a vehicle from the fire department, you just want somebody to show up and help you. And, and so we view, even though EMS transport may not be what our mission is, we still view the citizens as our customers, and, and we believe that they, they, uh, deserve a certain level of service.
I understand.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
So what would the next level of service cost us? Uh, you know, how much capital would be required to buy a new rig, and what would be the ongoing expense to man that rig? Just ballpark.
Well, you wouldn't need to purchase another rig, because we already, we already have that, so are you, are you, is your question, Counselor, that you want to know what it takes to run an ambulance service, or are you wanting to know... Or are you wanting to know what it would take for us to provide additional EMS service within the current structure of the fire department?
I think it would be additional EMS service within the fire department.
Well, probably your initial outlay would be somewhere around eight to ten million dollars, just for equipment. And then you'd have to hire, then you'd have to hire the staff. But with the volume of EMS calls that you see, you wouldn't get by with just one ambulance. You'd have to have more than one. So double that, and then you're gonna need, what, two, four, six, nine, probably about at least eighteen more people to run that. So, and that's, you know, and that's a pretty sizable, sizable amount of money on an annual basis.
It is scary reading right now, what's happening in some of the other counties around the state where the MSs are evaporating.
Well, and just look at, just look at the communities where they've had people die because they called nine-one-one and no ambulance showed up at all. That just happened in, just south of Des Moines.
Sixteen-year-old with a peanut allergy.
Yep.
Yeah.
So Chief, what, do we have awareness of what Unity Point is doing for their coverage? I mean, what's the gap between when you guys arrive on-site versus when they arrive on-site? Are they five minutes behind, thirty minutes behind? Are they doing anything that addresses their coverage to remediate this issue?
So to answer your question, it's gonna vary by time of day and day of the week. They typically have more units available during the day. But with them taking on the transport, or the transfer service for not only Marshalltown Hospital, but Allen and Waterloo and Grinnell, they have ambulances that are always out of the city doing transports. So sometimes, you know, we might be on-scene two and a half minutes, and we've been on-scene as long as forty-five minutes, waiting for an ambulance to show up to transport. Now, the forty-five minutes is more the exception than the rule. Probably that two and a half to five or six minutes is reasonable, or is more the norm. But it happens. We just recently, at the beginning of the month, had to call an ambulance from State Center to come over and transport a patient, because Unity Point didn't have one available.
Your Honor, I have one more question. What can we do legally for nine-one-one abusers, the people who are tying up the system with non-issues? It may sound callous, but I mean, that's a pretty important resource people are abusing.
Well, that might be a question for Chief Tupper, as to what the state law allows for that type of, that type of an event.
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. I think we have to be careful about how we define nine-one-one abusers, okay? Because some people call nine-one-one because they feel like they're having an emergency, but, you know, maybe we wouldn't define it as an emergency. Sometimes they just, that's the easiest way to get a hold of public safety, whoever they're trying to get a hold of. So if somebody was truly calling nine-one-one unnecessarily, there is a misdemeanor crime that they can be charged with. That does not happen very often, because we have to be able to prove that it was truly an unnecessary call.
But you still go.
We still go.
Right.
Yeah. But, you know, I've had people call nine-one-one because the neighbor's not mowing the grass. You know, it happens, okay? So I don't know. We also have to walk a fine line, because we want people, we don't want people to be afraid to call or not to call. But it's been rare in my career that somebody's called nine-one-one, and we could prove that, yeah, it was a crime that was committed by calling nine-one-one. Okay.
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
Chief, you and Chris have talked about this, obviously, and I've gotta believe all of the firefighters are, you guys are batting this around. What is the general consensus? I mean, has anyone thrown something out there that, besides us going to Unity Point and banging our fist on the table? And, I mean, what have you guys, as a group, talked about? Is there, let me rephrase that. Is there anything you can share with us in this venue?
I don't think approaching the hospital and banging your fist on the table, demanding payment, is the right option. Because my question would be, what happens if they decide, oh, okay, well, we just won't provide the service? Then what do we do? Are we willing to take on the expense of taking on the nine-one-one service in the city? And to answer Counselor Snyder's question, we just answer that. That's financially not possible for us. So, you know, when we've talked about it within, in our staff meetings, probably not the easiest solution, but in our eyes, the solution is adding staff. With just adding, with adding two people per shift, then that allows us to staff a third vehicle, which, if you look at a lot of these calls, that would still leave somebody available to respond to a call if there was something. Is it fiscally possible right now? I don't, I don't think so, based on, you know, projections for next year's fiscal budget. But I think it's something that needs to be in the discussion.
I guess maybe a dumb question, but I mean, if there's the demand out there, and Unity Point has a service, why, I mean, not the pounding on the fist, but why have they not expanded their footprint in an area that obviously has a need for it? I mean, maybe that's a question for Unity Point, but I guess I'm just a little bit dumbfounded if you have this many avenues, and maybe it's because they're providing the service and they don't need to, and we fill a small gap that they perceive is adequate enough.
They have provided additional ambulances in Marshalltown since they stopped paying us, which I think was in late twenty-twenty, or late twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen.
And so they did provide more ambulances at that time.
Is it, Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Does Iowa Code allow for Unity Point to charge a surcharge for your services?
I do not believe so. I don't believe so.
There is, I think if you're talking about, like, services provided by a local fire department or county EMS, there, I believe, is a new tax levy that allows you to go through that route, but that's not available to us.
Correct. It's only, so in twenty-twenty-one, the governor signed a bill that allowed counties to levy for EMS services. But that's counties only, not municipalities. So that would not be, as the city minister pointed out, that's not an option that's available to us as a city.
As I understand it, there aren't many counties that have jumped on to that bandwagon yet, right?
Well, there's, unbelievably, there is not one that has done it yet, but there are several that are in the process of making that, making that happen.
Your Honor, may I, again?
You may.
Chief, the nine-one-one center decides, if we had a private ambulance service in town competing with Unity Point, and they were, they went through all the bells and, you know, Mike's ambulance service, does a nine-one-one center decide who to send those calls to then?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's possible, because I think there has to be a certificate of need. And if you already have a nine-one-one provider for EMS in the county, I don't know that some, a private ambulance service can come in and get a certificate of need and compete.
So we're damned if we do and damned if we don't right now, because we're providing, we're providing the muscle to carry the stretcher down the steps.
And providing, and providing initial care.
Your Honor, I just want to make a comment. You know, we do pay taxes for that reason, so it's not like we're doing it for free, free. That's kind of an expectation, as being a taxpayer, it's that kind of insurance policy. So I don't think we're getting as screwed as other people.
We're also pretty grateful that I have a new hospital after having gone through bankruptcy, and so it's a question of how hard can you push against an entity that salvaged our hospital and built a new one for us.
I just feel like it's important, as a council, that we are forward-thinking in discussions that we have, the awareness that we have around these issues. And I appreciate you, Chief, for bringing a good discussion forward and not just having one and done, and then waiting for a crisis to occur. We need to just be mindful, and we know that mental health issues, population changes, aging population, these things are in our future. So if we can be more mindful about the resources that we use, the calls that we engage in going forward, and the resources that we put forward to support our fire department, it's not just a one-decision thing, it's a ongoing conversation and...
Well, and, you know, like I said, there's not one right answer to this. It's gonna take a lot of thinking. How do we, how do we change? How do we adapt? What do we do? What's the right thing to do? There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and I don't know, maybe that's a topic at strategic planning when it comes in the fall. I'm, just a suggestion. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had.
Appreciate your time.
Another reason to have a continuing dialogue with the county, too, with this new statute. I take it this isn't one where you're looking for staff direction, or am I wrong about that?
No, no, I'm not looking for direction. I was just asked to kind of clarify what was brought up in the annual report, so that you had a better understanding of what we're talking about. And I hope that we've done that. And I would, I would certainly invite all of you to come over and sit down and have a cup of coffee with the crews. And you can find time, schedule a ride-along, and you can experience firsthand what we, what we see on a daily basis. Because if you look, if you look at, if you look at the sheet, there's barely a two- or three-day period, pretty much during the month, where we don't have overlapping calls. So...
And as a total coincidence, we've just watched two ambulances head on north on Center Street, right, right past us.
Well, we just, we just had an incident last week where we had four calls in one minute.
Wow.
So it happens. And you're never gonna, like I said, you're never gonna completely eliminate it. All you can do is figure out ways to make it happen less often.
Appreciate the input, and thank you.
Okay, final discussion of the night. I'm just gonna pull up the draft resolution. Looking at what was the original direction when we discussed this at the, I can't remember what meeting, I think it was a March meeting, and talking about the compost fee, the direction was one dollar fifty per residential unit with a July first start date. And so if we're really committed to a July first start date, we need to have this discussion now, knowing that the third reading of the ordinance will happen at the June thirteenth council meeting, and we'll want to be moving as quickly as possible with other actions to get things in place. And so the fee would be adopted by resolution, as stated in the ordinance. And so I did do a draft ordinance here, including the one dollar and fifty cent per residential unit that was discussed previously. I also pulled the definition of residential unit occupant that we are currently using with Water Works. And then I need to talk to Michelle a little bit more about, we had talked about home occupations not being classified as commercial, but we have some updated zoning classifications. I am recommending that, depending on how far we want to go in toward, towards limitation of residential use, that we would start January first, and then do something where we are requiring either a, an advanced registration with the city of residency, or something that would help us, help the gate attendance to determine residency as well. So, and further define that residential use only includes certain types of vehicles and does not include dump trucks. So we're open for a discussion right now of how you would like to move this one forward, whether it is a January first start, January first start date, or July first of twenty-two, so that we know what to bring back to the next meeting.
Okay, we're open for that discussion. Your Honor?
Hmm.
I think we should start it as soon as possible. I've also been thinking, so say you have Ledford cut down a tree, and are we gonna charge him for disposing of the trees?
Yes, he would be paying the existing commercial rates that have already been adopted by, by a resolution.
Sure. And so with a dollar fifty, would that cover the operating budget if we charged nothing for that load?
I believe in the work that we did, that yes, a dollar fifty gets us into, I was gonna say, Barry asked me this earlier, and I did not write things down.
Hundred and seventy-three, seven hundred.
Yeah, I was trying to pull up the, I think it was the March twenty-eighth agenda when we talked about this. Yes, so this little chart gives you an idea of where we are at. We are anticipating one hundred and thirteen thousand in terms of an annual need, with not taking into account that we probably have twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars a year of grinding and chipping on our plates, which we haven't had previously. So, yeah, so we're up into at least needing a dollar twenty-five to likely cover our costs. And the dollar fifty is probably more of a guarantee we'll be able to cover our costs, knowing there's delinquencies in here, that you don't actually collect everything that you bill out.
So, Your Honor, if I can still go. What if we just changed it to all water bills and didn't charge for any fees, even if it was a commercial?
We could certainly do that, too. Yeah, there, I was gonna say, there is also in chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances, definitions related to who is a commercial customer as well, and what that looks like that could be included in a resolution.
I'm just trying to simplify things for the gate agent, and, you know, I really doubt people from out of town are gonna truck their stuff in here. But I, I think we just need to, you know, warrant of enforcement if we catch them doing that.
If I may?
You may.
I agree with Jeff. If we just charge all water bills, and then don't charge that, and then anybody, then it's all the way through the gate. I really, like you, I can't see people hauling their stuff from La Grande here to the compost center, or anything like that. I don't think we're gonna, unless we start seeing a problem, you know, you can just look at license plates and tell.
With the cost of gas these days, that's probably true.
Yeah, you know, and that would simplify things, and that way, the people who do really mass amounts.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can you remind us, the commercial account users get added benefits, like after-hour drop-off or disposal?
Yes, I was gonna say, that's probably one thing that we would need to discuss, probably at the next meeting. So we do charge, is it five hundred dollars?
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. We do have an option right now for commercial contractors to pay an annual fee of five hundred dollars that gives them access to the compost facility outside our normal operating timeframes. They still pay their current load fees. I also wanted to clarify, we currently do get compost from outside of city limits, because it's cheaper if you're halfway between here and Grinnell to bring it to here. We get stuff from Conrad and all of those locations. So as you're making these rules, I definitely think we will have outside-of-town compost coming to the city limits.
Wonder how Grinnell handles it.
They charge more, that's why it's cheaper to come here.
There you go.
Your Honor, if I may?
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, this whole thing started when we talked about banning burning citywide. Okay? This was a year and a half ago, whatever. And I made the comment that we can't ban burning citywide unless the compost facility is free at the gate, because those people have to have an option. So my intent way back when was, alls we have to replace is the gate fee. We're still gonna charge for the stuff going out, okay? So if you look at the information, the financial information, I don't understand how this turned into paying for everything when the gate fees didn't pay for everything. The gate fees only generate about the labor for the workers, about twenty-one thousand a year. And then you've got to factor in, we had two really big years with the tornado and the duratio. So I'm okay with billing on water bills, but not to pay for equipment, not to pay for shredding. We've been doing that all along. My whole intent was, and I don't care who brings the stuff in, that gives us more material to sell, and we just need to do a better job of marketing the mulch, the compost, and everything else. So what you guys said, I'm okay with it coming from California. I really don't care. You know, because you're gonna have out-of-state plates, you know... You know, because you're going to have out-of-state plates, you know, come to help Grandma clean up her yard, you know, but they're cleaning up someone's yard. You know, the haulers are going to be cleaning up yards in Marshalltown and taking trees down. I want to make it as easy as possible for the people at the gate. But my concern is, we don't need to charge $1.50. We just need to charge about two bucks a year, and charge everybody. We only need to generate about $24,000 a year to pay for the labor at the gate. That's all we've been making right now at the entry fee. So why are we putting this on the taxpayers to pay for more than what we're taking away from them, just so we can ban burning? So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Gary, I guess I'll chime in. I don't remember it starting on the banning of burning, because I don't think we ever got to a point where that was going to be a conversation that was going to be moving forward. And I guess from a second-point perspective, if we want continual drains on the general fund, then I agree, but I don't agree with that. And so therefore, I think the $1.50 is more appropriate. Otherwise, we'll continue to sink, and we'll be talking cuts, whether it be headcount or otherwise. We'll never get any additional headcount. We'll be in a position where we've been the last 10 years plus. So I'm in favor of what's proposed in front of us today. And I would agree with Jeff, that I think the easier it is upfront, less complicated that we're doing at the gatework and otherwise appropriate, so the less complications, the better off we are. And I'd agree with what I took as proposal.
Other input up here?
Does everyone agree that the $500 fee for the after-hour and everything could stay?
It's still an added service in my mind.
To me, it's a good idea.
Your Honor. The other problem I have with this is, we're putting this on the water bill. The Water Works is and isn't a department of the city. So there's three ladies that handle the payments at the water bill office. And I just think $3 per bill, residential business, the people that come in from my ward, where I live, they're going to take the anger, misdirected anger, and diffuse that. I just think we're going too far in getting back to something that Jeff said earlier. You know, then why don't we, you know, if people expect EMS to show up, and that's what they pay taxes for, then do they pay taxes for us? You know, back in my day, our taxes did cover brush removal and leaves. We raked the leaves into the street. And every fall, the city came around and picked them up. So how are we telling the public that we're going to fee for this and tax for this? And you know, I just don't like where we're going with this, I guess. So, thank you.
So do you need a motion?
I would like a motion, at least for now focusing on the, let me pull this up again here. Focusing on the charge, the start date, and then who is getting charged. I think we can figure out the rest.
So I would make a motion for that fee, the $1.50, starting in July. I think that was your date. And then all water bills.
Second. Further discussion up here, or out there?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. According to the Iowa Supreme Court, you can't generate revenue with a fee. And a fee has to create a special award for whoever pays the fee, like a fishing license. You can't create a utility without it going on to the public vote. And so you're going down a bad path right now, and I think you need to reexamine that.
Anyone else?
Linda Clark, 306 South 2nd Avenue. I have used the compo pile. I have paid $20 a pickup truck to take things down there and unload it myself. The water bill comes out every two months. Okay, we're paying $1.50 now for Marshall County landfill. I thought that that was Marshall County until 2018, when it was clarified that it's a private entity. I had used the landfill, and went out and had used it and paid a fee there. Putting this fee on the water bill is not a good idea, because it does not do it fairly. Because there are people that are not paying water bills. And I object to it. It's not a good path to be taking. I pay coming, going, bringing in, taking out, pay on my water bill. You say monthly? That would be $3 a month, plus the $1.50 that's there already for the landfill. $4.50. I don't think so. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second, right? Did I get a second?
Yes.
Good. Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
No.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, as well. Staff has its direction. And that takes us to the public comment time, so let me read this caveat. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda at this time. Again, approach the mic, give your name and address. Limit your time to three minutes, unless I authorize longer, which at this hour isn't likely to happen. The speakers shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and councilors should not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items, else we might violate the open meetings laws. The microphone is open for public comment. And nobody is rushing to the mic, so thank you for coming. It's 7:20 PM. We're adjourned.